Twenty twenty-three, the City Council should have the minutes from the July eleventh Committee of the Whole. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to amend the minutes that reflect that I voted nay on the rule to suspend the interviews for the Planning Commission. And I've given Lindsey and City Manager and you a copy of the words. Basically, it says, replace the current statement with, "Council agrees to suspend the rules for Planning Commission interviews," with a vote of eight to one. Councilman Griswold voted nay.
Ms. Crouch, will this suffice? How does the-
You need a motion and a second, and you guys have to vote to amend the minutes.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes.
Okay, second. I have a motion. Second, any discussion on this? Any questions? Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and the minutes have been amended. Okay. We'll move into the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission is the responsibility of the mayor to make the nominations. Tonight, I'd like to nominate Dr. Joe Astrip, who has served one partial term for a full term.
Second.
All right. Have a motion, a second, for Dr. Astrip. Is there any other nominations? Dr. Astrip came onto the Planning Commission a little over a year ago. It was a very trying time with our Planning Commission. We had just lost a member of our Planning Commission unexpectedly, and he has served well over the last year. I remind the council that Dr. Astrip had served on a Board of Zoning Appeals in Manhattan, Kansas, when he was on the faculty of Kansas State University. So he does come, did come with some experience, and he would like to serve one full term, a full term now with our Planning Commission. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll commend that later on in the agenda. Green Space Advisory Board.
Yes, sir. We have two vacancies. Terms begin August eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and end August seventh, two thousand twenty-seven. Incumbents William Brantley and John Martin have chosen not to reapply. For the first vacancy, I would like to nominate Michael Merritt.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second, for Michael Merritt. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
For the second vacancy, I would like to nominate Daniel Wyatt.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, for Daniel Wyatt. Any comments? Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries forth. All right. Thank you. I know we have one item of business before questions on the agenda. Ms. Crouch, should we go ahead and take care of the item of business on the Committee of the Whole?
The item of business on Committee of the Whole.
We're down to questions on the agenda.
Right. There's no item of business other, you said, other items on the agenda, sorry.
Yeah.
There are two items that have been added.
Right.
And the two items are items eleven A and eleven B there in front of you. One is an alcohol beverage license for the vintage two-two-nine-eight restaurant doing business as Vintage Butcher Shop. Don't confuse this with the restaurant piece where they are already licensed. This is for an off-premise-only retail beer and retail table wine. It's coming to you now. We did not get paperwork until yesterday, very late afternoon. And what we typically do with businesses, the butcher shop is open and functioning, is if we're able to get something on the agenda at your pleasure, I try to put it on to allow the business to make the sales they need to make. So that's item eleven A. And then eleven B is the award of a contract to Signature Tennis Courts Incorporated, and that would be ultimately, it was a bid contract. This was actually ready to go last week, and we had some behind-the-scenes questions with our legal team, and nothing was wrong with the bidder. This is something on our side of the ledger, and it was opted that everything was cleared up late yesterday afternoon as well. So this is to resurface all the hard courts at Yarborough Tennis Center. They were heavily damaged during the winter freeze, and the university, because the university teams play there, a lot of people aren't aware of that, is paying for the lion's share of this. We felt we had some responsibility. We have money. This is an enterprise fund in an account that will pay a portion of this. That's in your agenda item. So this is expected. The reason why wedging it on now is we need to get these resurfaced in time for practice to start in August. So we can talk more about that when we get there, but that's why the sense of urgency is not held till August one.
Okay. All right, good.
Mayor, if I may.
Please.
I would like to ask the council to consider allowing me five minutes on the next Committee of the Whole on August one to discuss an issue with part of Ward Three, Bridlewood. It's an ongoing situation with that street, which is not a street in the city, and I'd just like about five minutes to go over that with the council on the Committee of the Whole for August one.
Okay. Any comments or questions? So this would be, we put this, we'd set our Committee of the Whole up on August the first with time set aside to particularly discuss this topic. Everybody okay with that? Is the council okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any questions on tonight's agenda for the City Manager? Okay, here none. Is there a move to adjourn?
So moved.
We will adjourn the Committee of the Whole, and it is after six o'clock, so we will, excuse me, we'll go ahead and begin our regular agenda tonight and roll call with Lindsey.
Adams?
Here.
O'Blunt?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Mormon?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Witten?
Here.
Anders?
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. During the Committee of the Whole tonight, we did have a correction in our minutes regarding the suspension of interviews for the Planning Commission. Mr. Griswold asked us to amend those minutes, which we, the council, voted on and did. Planning Commission, Dr. Joe Astrip, was appointed to a full term. He has been serving a partial term, and he was appointed to a full term beginning August the first. Greenspace Advisory Board, City Council-appointed Michael Merritt and Daniel Wyatt, two full terms beginning August the eighth of two thousand twenty-three, and they're four-year terms. We do have a couple of extra items on our agenda tonight that we'll get to at the very end. And Councilwoman Witten asked for five minutes at the August first meeting to discuss a situation on Bridlewood Drive related to a development. I think I've got everything there from the Committee of the Whole. As far as mayor's announcements tonight, I do have a number of things I'd like to go through. The next couple of days, Wednesday and Thursday, myself and Opelika Mayor Gary Fuller are proud to be ceremonial hosts to the Alabama League and Municipalities Quarterly Meeting. This meeting is normally held in Montgomery at their headquarters, but for the first time in their organization's history, from what I'm told, they have moved their meeting to a satellite location, and we're proud to have them in our community. They will be eating a couple of meals in Auburn tomorrow, and if you see the Southern Union bus me entering around our community, I'll be giving them a tour of Auburn late in the afternoon. Mayor Fuller's giving them a tour of Opelika early in the afternoon, and then we'll have our board meeting on Thursday. But we're very proud to have the Alabama League and Municipalities in our community for the next couple of days. The Port Authority from Mobile is coming to our community next week to meet with local and regional leaders to talk about all things regarding the port and its impact on our community and our state, and certainly look forward to being a part of them here next week. An event I love to participate in, and I encourage all of our council to be there, is the New Teacher Breakfast for our city school system is next week. It's an opportunity to meet those bright-eyed and bushy-tailed new teachers who have the responsibility to mentor and teach our young people our most precious assets in this community, and I look forward to being with the superintendent and the school board and all the teachers and principals as they get ready for a new school year. Cheers on the corner. It's this Friday night. It's one of downtown Auburn's signature events. Certainly appreciate all the support from our departments here in the city. Appreciate the downtown merchants thinking outside the box and creating a great reason for people to come and have family time in downtown Auburn on Friday night. I'm sure there are still tickets available. In a week from Saturday, there'll be a Habitat Home dedication from the Curdy family. What a wonderful, wonderful organization and ministry Habitat is and the way they work with our families and partner with our families and have so many people in our community that support Habitat and their mission, and we look forward to being a part of that a week from Saturday as well. Anybody else on the council? Anything they'd like to report tonight? Announce? Okay, we'll move forward. I don't think Auburn University's representative is with us tonight. I think they'll be coming back soon. So we'll start with Citizens Communications on items on tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity for you to speak to the council about things and agenda items tonight. This is five minutes, and please ask, please, we please ask that you come forward and give your name and address for the record. Again, these are only on items that are on our agenda. Okay, we'll move forward. City Managers, Communications.
All right. As mentioned earlier, we will be adding two items of other business. They do reflect on the council agendas as item eleven A and eleven B, and everybody sitting in this room has copies of those. So our first item of business is the Consent Agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda and deal with that item individually?
Okay. Is there a move to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent Agenda carries forth. Ordnances.
Under ordinances this evening, item nine A one is a request from Herring Development LLC to annex approximately eighty-five point seven-nine acres of property located on Bridlewood Drive, East Creekwood Trail. The Planning Commission failed to recommend approval of this request by a vote of three to four at its July thirteenth meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Anyone have a problem? Excuse me.
I mean, it's a, I don't have a problem moving forward.
Okay. I didn't finish my statement, so you can go right ahead.
No, I apologize procedurally. I thought you were going a different direction.
No, no, we're good.
Can we go ahead and do that?
Go for it.
Okay. We have a motion, second. Anybody on the council have a problem moving forward with vote on this this evening? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I thought we were gonna consider the comments of Councilman Witten on this and postpone this until after we've had her briefing, to a date certain, I guess, the second meeting in August, maybe?
Yes, I was going to make a motion to postpone, but I wanted to get it through and on the table first, so.
Right, you're fine with either way. It's on the table now.
Yes, the applicant has requested to postpone to a date certain of August fifteen, and I would like to make a motion to postpone item nine A one to a date certain of August fifteen.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to postpone to August fifteenth. Any questions on that? Okay. Is that just a voice vote?
Go ahead and roll call, just to be safe.
All right. Lindsey, roll call.
Adams?
Yes.
O'Blunt?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Bitten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item nine A two is a request from Kendall Milner to annex approximately point five-one acres of property located at one-nine-six Lee Road fifty-seven, also known as Willis Turk Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its July thirteenth meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion, second. Anyone in council have a problem moving forward with vote on this this evening? All right. Seeing here you know. Any comments or questions? Okay, Lindsey?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Questions?
Please.
Do the existing lots that are on Willis Turk within the city have septic systems?
I'm not sure about the lots on the opposite side of Willis Turk. The property in question, I do understand that they have a septic system in place there. Obviously, it's a little bit smaller lot, but have no reason to believe we've reached out that there would be any issues with what they currently have there. And there is an existing residence on this parcel currently as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just an observation. This is only half an acre, and it's on three different corners. Is that, am I reading that right? Or is it the wrong box I'm looking at here on page? Well, it's the first map in the Milner annexation.
Yes, so if you look at that map, there's kind of a checkered little outline. It's a very small parcel, just south of Highway fourteen and just to the west of Willis Turk Road.
That's just the vicinity map. I see it now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Lindsey, roll call.
O'Blunt?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Anders.
Yes.
Under resolutions, item ten A one is a request from Parker Lewis for conditional use approval of a performance residential development, also known as a multi-unit development, for the Boulevard Phase Seven to be located directly west of Summer Hill Road and in between Old Stage Road and Bryant Avenue in the medium-density residential district. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its July thirteenth meeting. A public candidate required.
May for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second this time. I'll open the public here. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I'll close the public here. This is on this particular topic. Yep. Okay. Any questions in the council?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, we've got three separate parcels here. Then we're lumping them all together into a single conditional use request. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's very normal. They have to do a lot consolidation per staff comments, and so they will do that as part of their required criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Megan, you know how many phases that we'll have of this? I mean, is this, is that?
There is more property in the vicinity that has not been acquired by the developer that they may wish to acquire or acquire, but we do not know for sure at this time. Nothing is, I'm gonna ask our development team, has been submitted.
Nothing else has been submitted at this time.
No, this has been a multi-year process. I think you currently have about a hundred and fifty or so units out there, not bedrooms units. There's more bedrooms than that, but it's been a, as this is phase seven, there could be other phases. We don't know for sure yet.
All right, any other questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Under other business, item eleven A is a request from the Vintage two-two-nine-eight Restaurant LLC, doing business as Vintage two-two-nine-eight Butcher Shop, for retail beer off-premise only and retail table wine off-premise only, alcohol beverage licenses for property located at two-two-nine-eight East University Drive, Suite B one zero two.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you for their investment in Auburn, and I had a conversation with one of the owners, and they were very kind in their compliments of the staff and working with the city, and I just, of note, since we get a lot of flack for other things, so welcome again, and thank you for another investment in Auburn, and thank you for the kind words.
Totally agree, Ms. Witten. I appreciate their willingness to follow their dream of opening this business in our community, and thank you for wanting to be a part of our community, and we look forward to this new business getting open as well. All right, anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eleven B authorizes a contract with Signature Tennis Courts Incorporated to seal cracks and resurface hard courts at Yarborough Tennis Center in the amount of seventy-three thousand and fifty-three dollars, forty-six thousand seven hundred and ten dollars of which to be paid by Auburn University, and twenty-six thousand three hundred and forty-three to be paid by the City of Auburn.
May for approval.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Does anyone have any questions? Comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. I'd like to read a statement before we move forward with Citizens Communications, please. "In support of and respect for open and fair and informed decision-making process, City Council recognizes that civil and respectful and courteous discourse and behavior are conducive to the democratic and harmonious airing of concerns and decision-making. However, uncivil discourse and/or discourteous and inappropriate behavior have a negative impact on the character and productivity of the decision-making process. In an effort to preserve the intent of open government and maintain a positive environment for citizen input and council decision-making, the council has adopted a set of citizens' open forum procedures which set forth the rules of decorum and civility which govern this part of our council meetings. These are available for every council meeting right over here as you enter. Specifically, paragraph three of the open forum procedure states in part that all citizens should use a professional and respectful and civil tone when addressing the council and should expect the same in return. This policy does not consider the content or the viewpoint of the speaker, but is critical to prevent disruption, preserve reasonable decorum, and facilitate an orderly meeting. Likewise, the first part of paragraph four of the open forum procedure states, citizens' open forum is an opportunity for citizens to present comments to council on non-agenda items and is not a forum for debate. As such, citizens should address the city council as a body and not address an individual council member or city staff member. For many years, this council has interpreted the first part of paragraph four to mean that the open forum portion of council meetings should not be used to personally attack or air grievances or discuss in any manner individual council members or individual city employees. As such, speakers during the citizens' open forums should refrain from discussing individual council members or individual city employees by name or in a manner where those individuals can readily be identified. Again, this policy does not consider the content or the viewpoint of the speaker, but is critical to prevent disruption, preserve reasonable decorum, and facilitate an orderly meeting. It is not easy for me, as the mayor and the chair of these city council meetings, to administer these rules of decorum in the moment. In fact, sometimes it's very, very difficult. But I assure you going forward, I stand ready and willing to preserve civility and decorum in these meetings and to prevent disruption and facilitate an orderly meeting. If you'd like to speak to the city council about anything on your mind, you have three minutes, and we ask that you come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Reggie Hall, eight-thirty North Donahue Drive. And to respect Mr. Anderson's wishes, tonight, I won't be saying too much.
Somebody need to tell y'all why the police officer actually killed your brother. I'm gonna actually have a conversation with the city manager, because if I have to use what she say against her, when we get out there and we go to the media and we get out there and we protest against this thing, then I can say, well, I asked you to talk to the city manager, and this is what she said to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So I wanna catch people in their own words. And your mama have, like I said, she has contact. She done, she done did a formal complaint with the N W A C P. So, so you know, with the N W A C P behind, behind y'all and everything, you gonna see, you gonna see a difference. And what, what you trying to, you gonna see something come out of what you trying to do. I'll put it that way.
Death before disloyalty. Always. I won't stand for corruption or anybody playing with me and my family. That's all I got to say tonight, and I appreciate who was on this audio recording. I think you all know who was at that, and she recognizes how corrupt and the things that happened to my brother Ricardo Gary. And my mom is out here today, and everybody will respect her and my brother.
Amen.
Including you, Mayor.
Amen, 'cause I haven't talked to anybody.
Who'll be next?
It don't even matter.
Hi, I'm Carrie Hill from eleven ninety-nine North Star Court, and I just wanted to come today and express to the city council how grateful I am for a community resource we have here. I typically go to our public library multiple times a week, and I just wanted to express how grateful I am for their services. When I first moved here after grad school to work, it had been a long time since I had read anything for fun. I read so much for my classes and for my research that when I got home, I just wanted to watch TV and tune out. And after I finished school, that tendency to just go home and not do anything stuck around until I started visiting our library. When I saw their signs for their winter reading challenge, I decided to sign up, and that challenge rekindled my love for reading and helped me change my daily habits to include time to read for my own enjoyment. That habit has been shown to relieve stress, to improve memory, focus, and concentration, and to provide mental stimulation that can slow the spread of Alzheimer's and dementia. Not to mention, I've personally found it very helpful to stare at a book in the hour before bed instead of looking at my TV or my phone. So I'm very grateful for the programming at Auburn Public Library for helping me make that change. I've also found our library to be a great place for children in our community. One day, while watching my friend's four-year-old daughter, we decided to visit the library, and she had a blast. She picked out a lot of books for us to read together, and we had a great time doing that. She got to play with other kids in the community on a day where it was storming outside, and they had a safe place to do that, which was wonderful. Since then, my friend's family has started going to the library regularly as a family outing, and their daughter was so excited when I stopped by on Sunday to tell me, tell me about the books she had picked out at the library the day before. So in all my interactions with Auburn Public Library, staff have been unfailingly helpful and kind, and they create a positive atmosphere and great programming that fosters a love of reading in both adults and children. So I'm just glad and grateful for the city council that you support our public library and that our library trusts us as patrons to provide a diverse and full collection and let us make decisions for ourselves and for our own children about what's appropriate for us to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
I'm trying to figure out how to edit this when I was just notified a few minutes ago. Does that mean that I can't use the word mayor? Does that mean I cannot use-
That's fine.
Okay, good. And if I do something wrong, let me know, because I'm gonna try to-
We will.
-be within your decorum. Mayor, you were born and raised in Auburn. I assume you played throughout the city of Auburn, and your youth-
Name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me finish that. As you used, like I did, in the community of Palmetto. My name is Robert Wilkins, two sixty-one, Denson Drive, Auburn, Alabama. When I started, I wanted to know why you wanted to be mayor. Can you tell us?
We can talk about that offline. This is not a time for question and answer.
Well, you want to meet with me, so I don't understand that. Okay. Mayor, you single-handedly got Ordinance thirty-two eighty-eight, short-term rental passed with your, with four or five other members, and I hope you, four under, excuse me, and I hope you and your elite, so I can't say that either. Mayor, you made sure the councilwoman Witten proposed an amendment on Ordinance thirty-two eighty-eight fail, and you made sure that that did fail, and I hate that. I wanted to know why you were trying to destroy your own beloved Al Auburn with Auburn's own style of skyscrapers. Progress through change makes changes in landscape, but you seem to care a little bit about the history. I, when you drive with your, you cannot drive with your eyes closed, okay? As you can tell, I'm trying to edit this. East Stanford Road, I go down East Stanford, and I turn on Gay Street, and there is a condo that's coming up five stories high. As I turn onto Gay, there's a attachment of a parking deck that's five. I cannot figure out, I know who approved it, I would assume the city manager, all the heads of people that are behind me, the mayor, the council, and the zone, I mean the commission. But what I don't understand is how it was done on such a small piece of property. I believe that we have six flat-screen TVs in here, that when we do some kind of development like that, they should be up here so we can look at it. I'm not sure any of the council knew exactly what they were gonna look like, but I hear nobody say anything about how wonderful that little place is, because it is crammed with those two items. And I can't- And I can't believe this. I'll have to do this next week, and I'll have to rechange it. The new development at Robin, that Robin Morgan is doing is, is a concrete metal just coming out of the ground, kind of like a mushroom on your old place at Anders Bookstore. And I just challenge each member that you should spend, maybe get two people a month or three people that you've never talked to in your ward, and ask them their opinion. I believe all of you would be shocked at what they think about some of the progress. Thank you.
Martha Shamp, 307 Camellia Drive, The Cure. The Auburn Public Library must cut all ties with the ALA. It's a corrupt organization. Its stated goal in training, in a 2020 training video, is to quote queer the libraries. The Auburn Library is the lapdog of this immoral association. The ALA has an Orwellian office of intellectual freedom to defend teenage and child porn across the country. The training at ALA, the training was led by the president of GLAD, a leading pro-homosexual group. ALA is the puppet master of our local library. ALA is a team to destroy kids' morals. They fight parents who complain. They even intimidate public officials. They train spineless librarians of the woke variety. They say, don't let the parents bully you. Their only goal is to accelerate the acceptance of homosexual deviancy and to change a child's ideas of sex and gender. Cure, Auburn Library must cut all ties to the corrupt ALA. Mayor and council, you have the purse strings. You have the power over the library. Thus, you have the power to cut off their money, cut off their money. Not one more vile book should you be a partner in purchasing. The filthy things I read last week, please forgive the content of last week, but it was just to shock and show you I'm not making a mountain out of a molehill. There are obscene books in our library. Is it right for you to sign the checks for such horrors as those to be bought and placed in front of your children? Children. Thank you.
Who'll be next? Okay, we'll close citizens communications.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I couldn't let, let tonight go by if I didn't say how much I support our police officers, all of them. I think one thing we failed to mention in this particular case, we heard about earlier tonight, is this, this case has been for a grand jury, Elite County, Alabama, made up of our peers, and, and they looked at the case extensively, and they chose to nobill the case. There's no charges against these officers. Officers not killed anybody, has not been alleged. So, you know, I have a unique perspective about what goes on in a police officer's life, because I served myself for many, many, many years, and still trying to give what I can give to the police. And until you wear a badge and walk in the shoes of the men and women that protect this community, then you, you can't comment on what you think may be happening, or what can happen. The case, this particular case was investigated by the State Bureau of Investigations, took a thorough look at it. All of you have seen the video, and the grand jury looked at it, as I said earlier, there's no, nothing, the officers did everything they could do to make the situation right. They did, I watched the video, and I have a good bit of experience in this field. It could be a training situation where these officers conduct themselves. It was, I was very proud to say those officers worked for Auburn. It shows good leadership in this department, and it shows the officers get what they're trying to do. They're trying to serve the community, and that's what they were doing this day. So for anybody to be derogatory against these officers, I feel like it's sad, but I, I'll support them to the day I die, whether that be today or 110 years from now. I'll support them, and I get, yeah, I'm upset. I get offended when you talk about my brothers and sisters in blue. I get very offended, because I know what they go through at day in and day out, and I know we couldn't walk the streets of Auburn, Alabama, one for our men and women in blue. So instead of putting them down, you'll be thankful for them. Thank you that you got them. That's all I got to say tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Gee. Anyone else?
I, I also wanna say something, too.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I wanna comment on something that was read out of one of the books at our latest city council member. I have a granddaughter that I have been bringing to this city council member on her own. She has not, I have not asked her to come. Every city council member meeting, she would like to be here, and the language that she heard last week, I think, was inappropriate. It's, it was okay. I have no problem with maybe showing the book, but the things that was read out of the book, you have to be mindful of your audience when you reading stuff, saying things, and you have to know who's in the audience. And I feel that she should not have been exposed to some of the language that was heard last week, and that is my take on, on that, and maybe we need to do things in a different manner when we come before this council and make any type of statements and everything. Just be mindful of the people that you may have in the audience or even on video that's listening at some of these comments and stuff. And I felt bad for my granddaughter, who's 13 years old. She may not look like she's 13 to most, but she is 13, and she just turned 13. And so I, I just don't like the fact that she had to listen at some of the language